We had passing of a former councilman, John Flavon. So I would like to take out a little moment of silence in respect for him and everything that he has done for the town of Shererville and anyone else in your own private way. Thank you. At this time, uh, Robyn, would you do a roll call first, please?
Mr. Dick.
Here.
Mr. Henley.
Present.
Mr. Troxel.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Getzmann.
Present.
Mr. Yashin.
Present.
Chief Prusian.
Present.
Chief Damm.
Here.
Deputy Chief Tren.
Here.
Mr. Pinker.
Here.
Mr. Kedis.
Here.
Mr. Wolfman.
Here.
Mr. Self-Gromm, still present.
Great, thank you. Tonight, we, uh, we have some future voters out there. So, uh, anyway, we're here to get them aboard. We know you guys have to, you don't want to stay here and be bored to death, so we're going to do this first and foremost. Uh, we have a whole contest about our newspaper, uh, giving it a name. So at this time, I would like to say congratulations to you. Uh, this is a great idea award that we're going to present to you, and the certificate is presented to the 2014 Forest Ridge Academy fourth grade class for suggesting a great name for the town of Shererville newsletter, the Shererville Crossroads. So it was with great appreciation from the Shererville Town Council that we give you this award. While we have, uh, council, we have some of you to take some of the calls.
Yeah. Same thing.
You have all the council members. Can I just talk to one of you? First, what do you guys think?
Sure.
You guys kind of want to...
Third time's the charm. Third time.
Okay. Ready to take the next question, all right? Yeah. Thank you. Okay, and minutes on May 14, uh, 2014 public meeting, pleasure of the board.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion to second and discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five zero. Claims, any additional questions, Mr. Wolfman?
No additional claims.
All right, pleasure of the board. So moved. All right, second. We have a motion to second and discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five zero. Any correspondence? Correspondence?
No correspondence.
Any reports from staff members? Any staff member reports? Hearing none. There is no old business or new business, so I will take any business from the floor regarding redevelopment, any business from the floor regarding redevelopment. President.
Other council members, I just want to make one quick comment. I just want to say that, uh, under redevelopment here, uh, the Shoxon main development is going very well, and I see it's, uh, pretty much going on as scheduled ahead of schedule, so I do like the new restores that are coming in, and, uh, I think that project is, uh, is kind of refreshing, so I just want to make that comment for it.
Agreed. Okay, um, so is there any other business from the floor? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned, we'll move into the water work.
Good evening, I'd like to call the Board of the Water Works Board meeting for Wednesday, June 11th. Uh, roll call will be the, uh, council members minus Mr. Troxel and Mr. Condon. Minutes of May 14, 2014 public meeting.
Motion approved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Claims?
Motion approved.
Second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Any correspondence?
No correspondence.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, motion carries three zero on both of those. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Any correspondence, Mr. Wolfman?
No correspondence.
Any reports, staff, board members? No old business, new business. Resolution 2014 dash two, providing temporary loan of funds for the town of Shererville in Indiana, here 2014. Mr. Wolfman?
Hi, yes, Mr. Schmidt. This is, uh, kind of like a safety bell. We're not sure when the tax draw will actually be here, and we'll have a bond payment that will be due right in the first part of July, so Janice wanted to have this in position in case we borrow funds to make the bond payment, uh, prior to getting the tax draw.
And that's coming out of the water improvement fund, the water...
Right, it will become out of the water improvement fund, but it will be repaid as soon as the tax draw is in place, if it gets used.
Thank you. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. At this time, I would like to open up business from the floor regarding waterworks, business from the floor regarding waterworks, no business from the floor, this meeting adjourned, we'll move into utility board meeting. I'd like to call utility board meeting for Wednesday, June 11th. Uh, roll call will add, will add Mr. Troxel and Mr. Condon back to it, and on the roll call, minutes from the May 14, 2014 public meeting.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Claims? Any additional claims, Mr. Wolfman?
No additional claims.
Motion approved, claims, second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Correspondence from utilities?
No correspondence.
Any reports, no reports, staff, council members? No old business, no new business? At this time, we'll open up business from the floor regarding utilities. Business from the floor regarding utilities? No business in this meeting, we return, we'll move into the town council.
Call order, the, uh, town council meeting for Wednesday, June 11th, 2014, at seven twenty-six. Uh, let the record show, roll call is the same as utility board. Next item is, uh, minutes from the May 14, 2000 public, 2014 public meeting, pleasure of the council members. Second, a motion, second and discussion. Hearing, seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, saying aye. Motion carries. Uh, claims, uh, we have claims up for us here, uh, council members, your pleasure in claims.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Um, I'd like to add one additional claim, Mr. Gockett. Um, can recall, we, we had the RTP for, it's in the back here for signatures tonight for the US Marshal Service, the seizure car, the Jeep, that we agreed to last year, and, uh, I didn't see it, it wasn't on the claim, rather than my attention, so I had asked that you add that to the claims, the US Marshal Service in the amount of seventeen thousand five hundred eighty-five dollars and ninety-seven cents.
Okay, we add that to the claims?
So moved, Mr. Chairman. I have one comment also.
Yes, sir.
Item G, Mr. Wolfman, is the Stevens Playground Equipment, is that, or Mr. Hewitt, do you know, is that project finished?
No, no, it's not. That's, it's the first draw.
It's the first draw.
And I think a lot of the money that you see there represents that material has been delivered or being stored on the site, basically playground equipment.
Did you have comments, Mr. Wolfman?
Yes, Congressman Schmidt, me to the punch for my report, um, the playground, the curving is in for the playground, and the actual equipment will begin to be installed on Monday.
Well, that's the point of order, I think there's been a motion on the claims, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we can begin the discussion now. All right, go ahead.
All right, uh, uh, you'll see the equipment going up, um, pretty much all of next week, and the, the surfacing will follow after, so we're, uh, two weeks away from the party.
Okay, any other more discussion on the claims as presented? Seeing here, and all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All saying aye. Claims are approved, five zero. Thank you, Tommy. Uh, any correspondence, Mr. Wolfman?
No correspondence.
Uh, we already gave an award out for our newspaper. And for those of you who, uh, haven't seen it, our Shererville Crossroads newsletter should be seen in the mail, that is the, uh, the name that was taken by the fourth bay to Forest Ridge Academy, so appropriately named. Any reports at this time, staff members?
No reports.
Uh, council members, I'd just like to make, uh, a note here, um, last week, we, we lost a, uh, former council member and current safety board member, John Flavon Senior, on Monday, June 2nd. Just want to mention a few things here, John served, uh, this community on the VZA, he served in town council from nineteen eighty-six to two thousand and two, and on the safety board, two thousand and twelve to last week, June 2nd. John was instrumental in growth of Shererville, overseeing new subdivision, street improvements, and infrastructure improvements, keeping waste and sewer rates low through negotiations and utility management, always watchful of property tax rates to Shererville citizens, instrumental in downtime removal of buildings of police and court building, along with the town hall. Not only was John a fellow council member of mine, who showed me how municipalities are managed and positively set, he was a good friend, but I still remember the positive impact John left serving the town of Shererville. Thank you. Any other, uh, reports or comments from council members at this time? Seeing and hearing none, um, any public comments regarding agenda items? Please state your name and, uh, and address for the record.
Derek Newell, seventeen forty-one Chelsea, also president of firefighters local, four two seven nine. Um, speaking on behalf of, uh, item eight, which is our fire department duty policy, what I wanted to thank the safety board, Mr. Wolfman and chief, for working very hard on this, spent a long time coming, we've been working on it a long time, um, as you guys all already know, we've worked, locals worked very hand in hand with chief, Mr. Wolfman, and safety board, coming up with something that was fair for all the firemen, and more in line with what we do, and our job. Um, so I, I, for that, I want to say thank you for all their hard work. The union as a local, uh, we are in favor of this, and I would ask for the council for five zero vote in favor of this ordinance for our community policy. And I thank you all for the ordinance, our things, about, thanks chief, and, uh, thanks to the safety board, they believe, this was a drawn out process, but I think we have something to do with it, and it's all parties involved, all right? So, thank you very much, thank you.
Any other public comments regarding agenda items? Any other public comments, seeing and hearing none, public comments are closed this time. At this time, we have our Indiana State Rep from the fifteenth district, uh, Mr. House Lager, out.
Thank you, Mr. President. Can you hear me all right? And, uh...
Only if it's good news, we'll hear you.
Yeah. And by the way, uh, sorry for your loss and losing lots of friends.
Thank you.
Um, I, I appreciate you humoring me for my, uh, annual legislative update, I'll try to keep it focused on a few things that I think are really relative to Shererville. Um, before I do that, though, I, I just wanted to make a, a brief comment, um, about, uh, getting political on E nine eleven thing, I don't, you know, where did that really goes, but one observation that I, I just have to state is that, um, Shererville and St. John and Cedar Lake, um, put their heads together and worked on, uh, a way to lower cost. And from my observation, uh, I saw capital budgets reduced, I saw operating budgets reduced, and really, that effort's responsible for saving, uh, Lake County taxpayers millions of dollars, and so I compliment you on, on your efforts, and wherever that goes, you go, but I, I do appreciate that as a taxpayer. Um, we had a short session this year, it was, uh, only ten weeks. By all reports, all we talked about was gay marriage, uh, however, we had eight hundred and fifty bills presented and two hundred and twenty-four passed. I could probably argue that was about two hundred bills too many, but that's me. Uh, most of those bills, however, are rather than a theory, repairs of unintended consequences of bills passed in prior sessions and what have you, and many of them are, are very simple fixes. Uh, I was involved in, in a number of those, in fact, one of them, I was involved with was, uh, Sunville three sixty-seven, where in committee, I made an amendment to direct the, um, the money saved in tax credit loophole that was, uh, that was found, to direct that toward rail transit in Lake County. Now, I know that this town, uh, has proved participating in that, and I do appreciate that, obviously, I'm in favor of it, because I saw this as an opportunity to direct four million dollars to something meaningful, as opposed to being spread out and probably spent on, on whatever. Uh, that four million dollars, uh, was directed to the RDA for purposes of managing that money. But the real logic behind all of this is, um, to provide the RDA a project that we can go to Indianapolis next year for reauthorization of the RDA. Let me just back up briefly, the RDA had ten-year authorization when the toll broke this is, and that tenth year is coming up next year, and without the authorization, that money coming from the state will be gone. Uh, we've had a number of projects that, uh, largely North County, that have been very beneficial, uh, the, the largest of which was this work on the care airport, which is a tremendous economic development opportunity, um, if we get that airport operating to its retention. And so I would hate to see, as, as a representative of Lake County, not just Shererville, that might dry up, and so I will be working, uh, my luck the best, to try to encourage that, uh, have the authorization take place. And it's my understanding that fiscal leadership and consent is, is particularly interested in project funding. In other words, rather than just saying, oh, we're going to give you ten million dollars a year for another ten years, we're going to want to see it tied to specific projects. And I'm fine with it, and rail certainly, one of those projects can have dramatic economic development, and, uh, and particularly in this area. So I appreciate your participation, uh, the initial stages, the goal was to get all the communities on board in some way, so that, really, so that I could go to Indianapolis and say, hey, look, all the communities are on board, they see some value in this, and contributing their share of the seed money, and, uh, how all that works out, I'm not sure, that's, that's not my job, my job's to shepherd once we get to the end. So, uh, I do appreciate that, I will also say that one of my concerns will be with the RDA, that we can focus some dollars towards South County, and not just North County. And, uh, I do know that the RDA plans on directing, uh, dollars in the recent central area, to the Indiana, Indiana corridor, and develop them along there, as, as a means of more transportation oriented development in that corridor. So I think that's something that we'll have to give them to, uh, perhaps better define, so we know where to bring that when we get into the legislature again. I would also make one last comment about that, there are those that are not pleased about, uh, committing thirty-four percent of the seed dollars, I just want to address that straight up. I approved the bill, I voted in favor because they asked, Marion County asked, as, as well as other counties, power counties, for a point two, for authorization to bring a point two five percent tax to refer to in their respective counties for transit. That's a quarter of a percent for transit, that would not include rate. That's just for buses, quarter of a percent. What we're talking about here is a third of a quarter of a percent, a third of it, so, um, that seemed like a pretty good deal, and I appreciate your participation. Um, one of the things I wanted to talk about, switching gears, is a bill that did not pass, and that was a nursing home moratorium. And you may have heard about this, because we've got a number of developers in the area with plans to build more nursing homes, we're really kind of short up here, the problem was, um, is that we had too many Medicaid beds, and when the state is funding Medicaid beds, and they're not all utilized, the cost per bed is really much higher, and so the taxpayers are paying more money to pay for those Medicaid beds. Well, the idea being, there would be a moratorium for five years, this bill was original, to allow those beds to fill up, and it was a total moratorium. I heard this bill under my public health committee, because it started there, and then it recommitted to ways of means. I did not like the idea of a five-year total moratorium. The reason it was a total moratorium, and what I mean by that is, whether it's Medicaid beds, Medicare, or quietly paid, you couldn't build any more facilities until they got filled up. There was, uh, obviously, quite a ground spell against that, it was ultimately amended to a one-year moratorium. Currently, there's a, a moratorium on just Medicaid beds that is set to expire on June 30th this month. What happened in the legislature was it came down to a conference committee report that no one could approve, and the bill died. And what surprised me was I expected us to agree on, on a one-year extension of the existing moratorium, which I would have voted for, uh, however, that didn't come to pass, the bill passed both houses and another nine, and, uh, and as of July 1st, there would be no moratorium on nursing home construction, so, um, I would anticipate we're going to see some more activity in the community. Uh, and finally, uh, I'd make just a brief comment on the business person property tax. I argued, um, really, quite strongly, my concerns were that bill as infrastructure, without any replacement revenue, uh, for county like Lake, uh, because we're so dependent on business profit person property tax and the impact it would have on our communities, on my communities, I'm pretty much all communities. Um, what was added to the bill, uh, in relation to that, was, was, uh, a super bait, but what we're seeing is many communities aren't offering those anywhere, putting so many hooks into them that they didn't really... But my concern was, that having a bill that Lake County did not participate in, in this regard, made no sense for the state, because in Indiana, when we talk about, uh, capital investment, it's an increments of hundreds of millions of dollars. We see how important the investment was to the people, and carrying us through the recession up here, that was, that was huge. That kind of investment is what we talk about in North County, and in my opinion, necessary to get Lake County on board, um, and to be able to participate in this, in this option, because it is an option, and it's not. I don't anticipate, and certainly would default, like, um, not being able to, uh, getting into, uh, the removal of business person property tax, but it'd be my hope that in the summer, they've got a Blue Ribbon Commission, that's going to be working on alternative funding mechanisms, it would be my hope that, that maybe this next session will have, uh, a new budget that will alter the way the structure already, essentially might be able to participate in that elimination as well. That's my report, I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions?
I have one.
Sure.
Um, Hal, you know, you touched briefly on the airport situation, and, you know, have you ever seen really, you know, the airport really coming to life again, because, I mean, firstly, I, I think that airport would serve, serve us very well, if we ever could get somebody, you know, get an airmine in there that, uh, can service us.
Well, um, honestly, I would, uh, suggest that there's one fundamental difference now versus in the past, and that is the operator, the personnel operator of this. And it would be my hope that, uh, their participation is going to help bring back airport glory.
I'd like to say that, and it's, it's a shame every time you pass there, because it looks like there's so much more that can be done to be, you know, very vital to the community.
It's close, uh, from an intermodal standpoint, it would be huge. I'm not sure that it's necessarily a, a commercial airport as much as it is, uh, freight.
Right, right.
We've got quite a investment, I should overspend, uh, I think it's a hundred and seventy million dollars, that is included in our airport.
Representative, received your, uh, information from the mail the other day, um, you listed a few things here, this time I'm going to find out how it benefits Shererville, you got improving our infrastructure improvements, you said there's, uh, House of Land one thousand two, four million rolls on you. Are there, how is Shererville bank going to manage?
Let me talk about that thing. Um, what that was, was the remainder of the major moves money from the, from the, uh, total of lease, there was four hundred million dollars still in reserve to be spent. It was determined that the, the cost of construction was going up faster than the interest that we were earning on that month. In other words, value of the money was going down. So, uh, it was decided that it would be spent and released an increments of two hundred million dollars, presumably, it would, uh, two hundred million this next year, two million the year after that, uh, for purposes of interstate authority. And the reason it's geared toward interstate improvements, bottlenecks throughout the state, is it can be used as seed money to leverage it up with federal match. The idea of being that four hundred million can be turned into actually somewhere beyond two billion dollars, that's a lot of jobs, that's a lot of road improvement. It was reported in the paper, there wasn't anything of that going specifically to Lake County. Uh, however, there are a number of projects in order of import, we probably were effectively bad, some big projects in Lake County, and are about to listen pass, Fine Avenue, and I-65, and some things where we have big interchange in Cleveland's, of course, we're finally redoing Fine Avenue, where they did a nice stand for resources and all state projects. Um, but most of the money will be used for, uh, bottlenecks in interstates around the state.
Okay. And the other representative? And the other representative?
Um, a couple of quick comments. Um, and Howard, I know, I mean, I need to have talked about this before. I, I appreciate your help on the South Shore because I, I personally believe that the South Shore expansion is an economic development project. I, I really don't think paved roads are economic development. We have a, we have a certain fund to pave roads and stuff, so I thought, I thought that was a real good project for economic development and, and Sherwood's kind of been a permanent project, being so close to, to the projected expansion. The other question I have for you is, and I'm assuming you voted for this because I think it was party line vote, I guess, but, and there's a lot of press on it. What about the education board that was developed to basically oversee the superintendent of public schools position? And what's the purpose of that board?
Well, of course, that was not created by the legislature. That was the governor that created that board. And it was not created to oversee the superintendent of public ed. It was created to deal with the skills gap. We have lots of jobs available in the state without training people to take them. And we're importing lots of workers for many skilled positions. The idea was to work as closely as possible with business and industry to make sure that we had a trained workforce ready to fill those jobs with boots. That's what that board was created for. It, it was done so without participation by the superintendent for whatever reason. I can't speak to that. And that's probably why it appeared that way.
Any questions? Just, just one question. Howard, do you know where the project stands right now for the South Shore extension?
Well, there's a lot of distance between that and, and training. Right now, I believe the, the, there's a working group working on an interlocal agreement. Now, we know what it's like trying to get an interlocal agreement put together with twenty-six communities or however many there are in one county. I anticipate that'll be a long process to put that together. And I might add, to somehow reconcile if that's the case, and maybe it's not the case of the state, but reconcile those who contributed different ways. How has that wonderfully worked out? That's not been discussed. I am participating in the, in the working group that was considering, how this could be done without raising a new tax. And that was the only thing. We've got a tax, how can we do this without any more taxes? And so the, the idea was brought up, well, let's see if communities would be willing to admit some of the seed dollars. It was pretty much that simple, and the, and the request started going out. And in the canics of how that's going to all work, simply designed to look at that. So there's a lot of work to do to get right. However, I do think that Indiana, Lake County is in, in the best position because of Congressman Swasey's position in the appropriations committee. I don't believe that he would be outworking as hard as he is if he didn't make the big money. So the money's there, it'll have to be applied for, and having all these communities on board and the dollars committed, particularly the four million dollars for we're redirecting that loophole money, is, is used to help build an operational fund. And that funding is necessary as part of that application. In other words, if you don't have a funding source for fifty percent of the operations, it's not going anywhere. So, yeah, it's, there's a long way to go.
Anybody else? Can't think of anything to ask him. I did ask him last weekend, so. Thanks for coming, Howard. Having said that, thanks for your time. Thanks for helping me out.
Thank you.
Keep a good work going on. Okay. Old business, I've seen the old business before, so on our new business, we have ordinance number eighteen fifty-three, in order to make the personnel policy manual for the town of Sherwood, Lake County, Indiana, which statutes include a fire department lead policy for town fire department personnel, repeating all town code sections, ordinances, and policies of parts thereof in conflict here with and all matters related thereto. This is the fire department lead policy. Gentlemen, we have it before us, and I know our administration, the safety board, and fire department personnel have worked a long time putting this together, and I hope they've vetted it out to the best for everyone at this point. Would you welcome any comments on this?
It's actually the culmination of a lot of work, a lot of individuals, the board of safety, was Mr. Merrill, Fire Department Chief Joe, and Eric, and they have a committee at the department working on it. And there was a lot of, there's a lot of email traffic going back and forth. There was a lot of rendition of this, and they were all vetted through all the groups and until, you know, everybody had to see consensus that this is a good document. I think it's a lot more comprehensive than what we started with, but it meets the needs of the fire department and is also going to help when it comes to holidays and everything. The benefits will be spelled out specifically for the firefighters, will help the administration better manage the department.
Do you have any, any comments here on that?
You know, Mr. Chairman, I, I too, as President Noel mentioned, I'd like to thank everybody that worked so diligently on this project, which started almost two years ago now. And the one thing that really comes to the surface when you think about it is when we went to twenty-four hour shifts back in, what, about two thousand and six?
Yep.
Our current personnel policy never addressed the transition of those hours, and it's been a payroll nightmare. Robin Teal sitting over there can tell you that. I'll bet you at least once a month, we would have to have some conversations between the fire department and payroll and Lord Bob and, and us to try and figure out how hours are tracked, days are tracked, holidays are tracked for both full-time and part-time personnel. It has been a long time coming, and, and you know that we've been working diligently too on a total personnel policy, but we felt as if it's relevant, then we at least get this portion of it passed tonight so that we can begin getting closer to working within the normal work structure that we survive in.
Good, thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to run in motion to pass ordinance eighteen fifty-three.
Second.
The motion is second. Any additional discussion? Hearing seen on paper, who's saying aye?
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries by zero.
Thank you.
Is required two readings?
Yes.
Motion to adopt. Second. The motion is second. Any additional discussion? Hearing seen on paper, who's saying aye?
Aye.
All same sign. I approve adoption. Thank you, gentlemen. Good job. Thanks to the safety board also for their participation in this. Item B, ordinance, yes, Congressman?
Sometime soon, you're going to get the balance of personnel policy. Bottomed this staff, we're working on that, so you're going to get a light document covering the balance of the personnel in the town, and it will be in similar fashion as to what you've seen here with the fire department lead policy. It will be comprehensive, and it will be a replacement for an update or modernization of the base personal policy in this town is adopted by then town councilor nineteen ninety-four. So it'll be your current twenty years.
Okay.
That's coming soon.
Item B, ordinance number ninety-five H. In ordinance of the town of Sherwood, Lake County, Indiana, many town orders number ninety-eight-five F, entitled, in ordinance, many town ordinances and town code section four dash one one four pertaining to ambulance user fees and rates, ambulance services provided by the town of Sherwood, mentioned on the fire department, repeating all ordinance and town code sections or portions thereof in conflict here with all matters related thereto. Would you welcome?
This is, this deals with ambulance, delinquent ambulance milk collection. I received this from Attorney Oshin. I think you need to elaborate more specific.
This is a modification of state statute pertaining to collection of these counts. The fees that are charged or could be charged, if you will, are not chargeable until unless the accounts are delinquent unpaid and in collection, only in collection. So this kind of by state statute.
Okay, very good. Pleasure of the council members.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Oshin, how, how long does it take to get in collection?
At least three months.
Three months after they achieve growth?
Yes.
Pleasure of the council on ordinance number ninety-five H. So, motion, second. And second, any discussion? Hearing seen on all papers, who's saying aye?
Aye.
All same sign. Hearing none, motion carries by zero. Please, motion to adopt. Motion to adopt. Second and a second, any discussion? Hearing seen on all papers, who's saying aye?
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries. Next, we have a resolution two thousand fourteen dash six. It's a resolution transfer fund within the category of corporations. We have that in front of us here. It looks like it's from the one hundred section, mental control, to one hundred, so it's internal transfer, same thing with the fire, and same thing with the ambulance service and control. Pleasure of the council.
So.
And motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing seen on all papers, who's saying aye?
Aye.
All same sign. Resolution two thousand fourteen F six. Item B, it's resolution two thousand fourteen F seven. It's a resolution authorizing and approving entry into joint interlocal agreements for the operation of the single public safety entry point, also known as a P S A, and all matters related thereto. This is an item that I know this council worked before on with three other communities, and now we're working on it with three communities here. And I'd like to turn over to Councilman Tippie for some points of view on this. Your proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just briefly, with a brief history is how we got here. Our last public action, we passed a resolution with the towns of Highland, St. John, and Cedar Lake, asking the county council and county commissioners to affirm statements they made back to us in variety of communications, whether verbally in meetings or in letters, to, to verify that, that things that were said were correct. I attended the May county council study session and requested that we have our resolution put on the agenda for the next meeting, and they basically refused to do so and stated that if we wanted any changes made, that we should run back through the E nine one one commission, which the E nine one one commission had already advised us that there would be no provisions made to their no agreement. So the four towns, well, Highland at that point opted to join the county P S A. The three remaining towns had agreed to meet again to look at further options, and we have done so, we're still doing so. But we've reached a point where we can no longer act as a group of three towns to deal with certain, certain corporate entities such as equipment dealers, other government agencies, such as the county attorneys. They've all, all have advised us that we should consolidate into our own P S A to move forward with our research. This, this is a fluid plan. This is not a final plan for a second P S A. It's just the beginning. If it, if it takes us there, that's, that's part of the plan. If it doesn't take us there, then at least we know we've exhausted all of our measures in doing our due diligence for the residents of our town. And I want to be clear, there have been some things said in the papers. We're not dragging our feet, we're not trying to be the bad guys. We feel that we're doing what is right for the people who live in our towns, the people who elected us. I'd like to go through a few of these key points so that maybe we can have a little better understanding of what we are working on and what it is we're looking to pass today. The first, the first point I'd like to make is the E nine one one consolidation law states that there shall be no more than two P S A's in a county after December thirty-first, twenty fourteen. It does not state that the entire county will consolidate into one P S A. That's been reported several times. It's inaccurate. By forming a second P S A, we are well within the law, and in fact, may even have been the intent of the law. We, at no time are we looking to drag our feet and put any of our residents in harm's way. Just wanted to be clear on that. Our plan includes using the same technology that will be used by the other P S A. And it also includes countywide interoperability. If that means they're, they follow through with the seven hundred megahertz frequencies, we will do the same. And some might be asking, how are you going to do that? You can't do that. Well, that's what's being said, but there's a lot of misinformation out there. We, we, we do have, this is why we need to consolidate, so that we can start the proceedings to get on board with everyone else. Our plan includes the formation of an executive board, which will involve one elected official from each of the communities who participate. We will also have an operations board. The operations board will consist of the police chief and fire chief of all participating communities. The operations board would then choose a director. It is our intent not to have a director that sits behind a desk and, you know, watches a few people work all day. This will be a working director, he'll have additional responsibilities. Our, our plan includes funding the operations budget with the levy transfer. This is another misunderstanding. We, we are not required to transfer our levy to a P S A that we do not participate in. There's a misunderstanding that we're going to, if we create a second P S A, that we'll be required to pay for, pay twice. I believe in the, in the paper, it was referred to as double taxation on our residents. That is inaccurate. It's another false statement. We will only pay once. Our levy cannot be taken from us. We choose to give it to who we choose to give it to. So it'll go to one or the other. Our, our capital budget is kind of where we're stuck, because we need to go into some negotiations. We have a range on our capital budget, but, but we're going to have to amend it as we do our research as a consolidated P S A. We may find out as we get through, through our research on a capital budget that it's not feasible, or we may find out that in our negotiations with the other P S A, that we have found considerable savings for both P S A's, and it may be to the advantage for all county residents for us to make this consolidation. And we do have some very good ideas to present to save everyone dollars in this consolidation. Our plan includes backing up P S A one. Again, you might think, well, I'll give a little three-town P S A, back up such a huge P S A. We have a plan for that, but we have to get more information, and we can only do that again as a consolidated entity. But we have been given a proposal that appears to be very valid, and we'd like to work through that proposal to, again, try to save additional dollars for everyone. Our plan also includes approving an engagement letter with the law firm of Barnes and Thornburg. In fact, Sherwood and Cedar Lake have already signed on with Barnes and Thornburg to act as our legal consultant and our E nine one one specialist moving forward as we continue our research and exploration into the second P S A. It is my hope that the town of Sherwood will, will pass this interlocal agreement tonight. Cedar Lake, I talked to their town council president, and they look, it should be on their agenda for Tuesday, and it looks as though it will pass there. St. John, we still have not received any... St. John, we still have not received any information one way or the other. So with that, I would like to thank our fire chief and police chief for their patience because I know that you guys are being talked to pretty much the same way we are in the papers. I know you guys are getting hassled at your meetings. And I appreciate the fact that you're not calling us and saying, hey, what are you guys doing? And that you're taking the brunt of this because we're not doing this to cause anybody any trouble. We're doing this because we think it's what's right. And we, and once we form this P S A and the operations board is created, we're going to be relying on you guys a lot, especially when it comes to creating the protocols and setting up the center and things of that nature, or at least the information that we need so that we can determine what our capital cost ultimately will be. So with that, I guess I would make a motion to pass resolution twenty-four, twenty fourteen dash seven.
There's been a motion on resolution twenty dash fourteen F seven. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second, any discussion? I'd just like to say thank you for the overview, Councilman Tippy, regarding this and your actual input into this.
Thank you for your help as well, Councilman Troxell.
With that being said, no other discussion. Motion to approve resolution two thousand fourteen F seven, by aye?
Aye.
Aye. All saying aye? Motion carries by zero. Thank you. Item B, consider revalidating ordinance number eighteen fifty being an ordinance amending Tom zoning ordinance number seventeen ninety-seven as amended. The same being in ordinance classifying, regulating, and restricting the location height, area bulk, and use of buildings structures, and the use of lands in Tom Sheroville. In said purposes dividing Tom into districts and all matters related thereto, this item is regarded in the Lance Development Corp., nine oh one Burr Street. Mr. Wobbin, can you brief us on this?
Mr. Troxell. What, we actually passed this zoning, re-zoning a couple of months ago. But then, as they were coming in for their first subdivision hearing, we noticed that they had a different advertising list. What had happened is somewhere in the process of doing their advertising, one of the sheets got misplaced or didn't get copy right, that stuff didn't copy right, who knows? But it was a different list. And so we made them re-advertise and reappear in front of the plan commission to reaffirm the zoning so that there was no question going forward. I talked it over with Dave and so it's gone through the plan commission and so now it's back here for your reaffirmation of the zoning. And also I'd like to ask that Dave, if there's anything that we need to record on this reaffirmation because these are recorded documents. Is there something that we need to do? Probably, okay.
With that being said, so there's nothing changing in the actual document where it's revalidated?
That's correct.
Alright, with that being said, pleasure of council.
So.
The motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion, any other? Hearing seen on all favor, seems to say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all saying aye? Motion carries by zero. Okay, item F. Proclaim June twenty-fifth, two thousand fourteen as Sheroville Fire Department Day in Tom Sheroville. Proclamation, whereas the Sheroville Volunteer Fire Department was organized on June twenty-fifth, nineteen fourteen, it was under the direction of Fire Chief Fred Hennerlong as appointed at Tom Board. And whereas the fire, first fire station was built on Joliet Street along with a signal bell, which was replaced by a siren in nineteen thousand twenty-six, nineteen hundred twenty-six, excuse me. And whereas in nineteen twenty, the Sheroville Volunteer Fire Department had a roster of eighteen volunteers, they utilized a two-wheeled cart which held sodium acid charges and was pushed by hand and also one ladder wagon. And whereas the first motorized anti-sodium fire equipment was purchased in nineteen twenty-two and replaced in nineteen thirty-nine. And whereas the first resuscitator was added to the fire department in nineteen fifty and in nineteen fifty-three, the first form of compensation was given to the members of one dollar per meeting attended and one dollar per call answered. And whereas the Sheroville Fire Department has transformed into a fully paid fire department. And whereas on May thirteenth, two thousand three, full-time employees organized established the Sheroville Professional Firefighters Union Local Four Two Seven Nine. And whereas the Sheroville Fire Department upgraded its ambulatory ambulance service in two thousand six from basic life support to advanced life support. And whereas the department operates out of three fire stations with three fire engines, one quint, one tower ladder, three advanced life support ambulances, and a fleet of support vehicles, fifteen employees. Whereas the men and women of Sheroville Fire Department currently led by Fire Chief Joe M. Cruzan have dedicated lives for a hundred years to the community effective June twenty-fifth, two thousand fourteen. Whereas the department and community leaders are proud of its history, traditions, community involvement, and it celebrates its centennial. And therefore, I, Michael Troxell, President of the Sheroville Town Council, do hereby claim June twenty-fifth, two thousand fourteen, the Sheroville Fire Department Day in the town of Sheroville, recognition celebration for the commitment and dedication of service to our citizens, community, and visitors. It is eleventh day of June, two thousand fourteen. So, move this picture on second? Motion is second, any discussion? My discussion was a hundred years, that's a long time. So I know there's a celebration coming up in September, so we'll all be there to welcome the hundred years.
Thank you.
I saw tickets are on sale already.
They're going fast.
Good.
Fire are good. Like fire.
Motion is second, no more discussion? All favor, seems to say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all saying aye? Motion carries. Item G is considered request for disbursement number five for Shabson May and Tiff Bond, totaling one million one ninety-three, one million one hundred ninety-two thousand four hundred eighty-five thousand seven nine cents. Mr. Wobbin, can you brief us on this side here?
This is the fifth and last draw of the Series A bond construction fund for the Shabson May.
Thank you. Pleasure of the council members.
So.
Direction, and a second, any discussion? Hearing seen on all favor, seems to say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all saying aye? Motion. Next, we have considered acceptable donation, I have sold one hundred forty-three dollars. We have three donations here, two with the ammo control. Lisa Alabato donated thirty-five dollars. Chobin Siska, eight dollars. Sue Vasdeki, one hundred dollars, for a total of a hundred forty-three dollars. Pleasure of the council on acceptance of these donations.
So.
The motion?
Sir.
And a second, discussion? Hearing seen on all favor, seems to say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all saying aye? Motion carries. At this point, we're going to open to the fore for business.
Chairman?
Yes, I'm sorry, Rob, I had you voting here.
That's okay.
As a comment.
Yes. As you know, I serve on the board for the NIC Foundation. The NIC Foundation is the Northwest Indiana Cancer Kid Foundation. And on Saturday, June twenty-first, from three to six, at a hundred East Joliet Street, there will be a stand called Alex's Lemonade Stand. And once again, it is to help on the foundation. So I hope the person will do us a kind thing and kindly mention that in their papers about the lemonade stand being there on Saturday, the day of the parade, from three to six at a hundred East Joliet Street. Buy a cup of lemonade and support good cause. And the second thing I had, because I have no shame in asking for donations, I'd like to know if, I'd like to make a motion that we donate five hundred dollars to the labor foundation for the Alex's Lemonade Stand.
We have a donation of five dollars. Second? Second, this is a discussion. Have we given donated already this year to foundations or? I know we did something.
We went to their gala.
Okay.
We sponsored a table there.
Just wanted to, and we did something. Okay, there's a motion, second, any discussion? Hearing seen on all favor, seems to say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all saying aye? Okay, there's so much council member. At this time, we have open for business, regarding town business. Any business on the floor? Any business on the floor, seeing you here and not.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just wanted to introduce in the past who can recognize scouts when they're here, working out for the mayor badges. And we do have one here this evening.
How?
Cameron Gunsarowski, if you'd like to stand up and be recognized. He's working on a citizenship to the community mayor badge here, he's a member of troop five thirty-two, of which many of you have had children that have participated. So in the past, you've always recognized him, I thought we'd do that as well.
Welcome to the last night, Cameron.
He gets to write a report, give it to me.